Click on that one. I've been here it. There you go. And then go to echo cancelling. No, next one down. It's like speaker echo cancel speaker.
Just one.
Okay.
Can you like her us?
Yeah.
Hi, everyone. Sorry, we had some technical difficulties.
Thank you.
Hi.
So I'd like to welcome everyone to the August eighth Mob Area Travel Council Advisory Board meeting. Like to call this meeting to order. And for the first line item, like to do discussion and action items. Approval of May ninth and and June thirteenth. Minutes.
On the on the May one of nine. Who's present. Chris Barish rather than Chris. That is pitch fourteen. Time. There's a this kind of stuff or something most anyway, it's a simple title you want.
We make a motion that we approve the May ninth. Minutes with the correction of Chris Barris.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, Rebecca. All in favor? And then next for all opposed. Discussion.
For the June thirteenth. I make a motion that we approve the June thirteenth. Minutes.
All in favor?
Hi.
Great.
Let me guess, I said them. Laurie's on the waiting room, but I
Hmm, she could be right there.
Maybe.
Should I say I have the link again because?
I'll alter to try to. Sorry, guys, we're trying to get Lori in as well.
Oh, here is sorry.
Okay.
Perfect. That's Lori. Okay.
Hi, Lori. Sorry about that.
She's connecting.
Good. Okay. And then next on the agenda, I'd like to go to board member reports. Um, I will.
Hold the introduction.
Yeah.
I messaged. Um, so I'd like to go around and do introduction. My name's Jenny Pison. I'm the Chair of Chalk and Spies Report. Sales for Taylor.
Mary McGann, Lee Son for Grand County Commission.
Alex Porchovski.
Vigo Metzner, still the Moab Valley Home Commissioner.
Ryan, how many board number?
Sharon Kinsey, board member.
Lacey Shumar, the Chamber of Commerce board member.
Austin House, an western citizen.
Skyway Economic Development.
Melissa Starks, Economic Development.
Let's go Zoom land. Lori, you want to go next?
Who want me to go since she's having trouble? Rebecca Monso, board member and sales manager of Homewood in Hampton.
Anybody not? Mark, do you want to go?
Sure. Mark Stephen at with love communications. Good to see everybody. And then I can jump in. Yeah, Adam Whalen with love communications. Good to see everybody.
And Collette.
Hi, everyone. I'm Colette Cox and I'm the Outreach Manager with the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity, serving Grand and San Juan Counties.
Lori, you want to go next?
Lori McFarland with High Point Hummer and ATV in Moab. Thank you for your patience. Glad it worked out.
Thank you. All right. And then next, sorry about that, guys. Um, board member reports. Um, so for Redtail Air, we look two months, I guess. We had a scenics were down helicopters were flat though, so their helicopter was down for maintenance for a little bit. But we have charter sales that are up. We have a successful package with a hotel property until you ride that we've been flying over a lot to come bring them over for the day. Um, we flew three in one day, actually. Um, so just to come rafting or to do a Hummer ride or things like that. So that's been really successful and popular. And then Rocky Mount near was up as well. Uh, but we did kind of hear from our marketing firm that Google searches are down like overall twenty percent from last year for all of Moab. They did that for just a Google analytic search, but if anyone's seen that. But that's a kind of report on red tail and pinnacle.
She says the train was flat down.
Up. The train was up. Um, charters helicopters flat because our we needed an incident for about five days.
Like, yeah.
Can I ask, are you talking year over year or just for the month or what are you year over year? Okay, yeah, for for July.
Is that comparing last year or two thousand nineteen?
This last year.
Just an idea for people out there, especially anybody that's renting cars. I rode the train to Grant to Denver back. And on my way back, there were a huge number of people that are getting off in Grand Junction and running the car to come to Moab. Because there's nothing in Green River. So that seems like that could easily become something that one of the rental places, or we could have, you know, a shuttle there that would take them to Moab to get their car. And they would like that because they really were excited to get more, but they could get there. But I bet I talked about eight to ten people that were renting cars, but so that's eight to ten people that could be running cars to Moab rather than Grand Junction. I do have a phone number of one of the people, union to think people could get us to Amtrak because you'd have to coordinate with Amtrak to see if people are getting off because you'd hate to drive your you couldn't you wouldn't want to go there every day. You know, you did want to make sure that there was somebody getting off the train or need it. It takes a coordination, but I see it as not a huge moneymaker, but a moneymaker.
Give it something. Well, I've had for the restaurant scene. Subaku was down a little bit in July. But really not too bad. Probably down. You know, about fifteen to twenty percent from from June, which is pretty expected. And at ninety eight, we had to actually close in July because we've got shorted that. And we'd already planned to be closed this month, so we're closed. So there is obviously no business right now. But uh, my general just I've been around town just cruising around, but it seems like there's quite a bit of international traffic. You know, just in the stores at night, I've been hit city market and there's plenty of international traffic in town. And restaurants look fairly busy, but the rest of town seems very quiet. Overall, I drove around a little bit. My mom and my aunt is in town right now. There's a slip rock and sin plots and there's like no one getting at all zero people ever came around. So definitely typical this year. It's everything's down in the camping world and people are, you know, camping in the high country and staying at home. But international travel seems to be up. I see definitely a lot more folks than we've had we've seen in a while. So I'm not sure how the occupation is at the vacancy of the hotels are, but I could imagine that they're also down. So, yeah, I've got some good feeling for September, though. I think it's going to jump up again. So whether it gets nice and apart no major financials, so it's that's all I got.
Thank you.
I'm not a member.
I didn't just pass the.
A passing.
For red clips, Jim was actually very close to last year's numbers. It was actually a good month for us. July, not so much. Uh, we were off about fifteen to twenty percent. Uh, primarily, most of the business that we've had in July is mostly international. It is a lot of French and German. We're just got Scottish people. But yeah, it's been it's been off revenue wise, though. We did about the same as we did last year, so that was good. But yeah, it's definitely been slow.
So at the mic, I concur. I did go ahead and do comparisons against last year and also twenty nineteen because, I mean, last year, twenty twenty one and twenty nineteen, we skipped twenty twenty. That one wasn't. But comparing Mick against last year is is very skewed because last year we had park rangers in there with us. They were also doing all the fire furnace permits out of there last year, so that bumped our visitation up. So we're pretty even with twenty twenty one and twenty nineteen. Um, but it is slightly down. But a lot of like, yeah, a lot of foreign visitors, a lot of language issues with the staff. But it's going good. Other than if anyone knows anyone who wants to do groundskeeping, send them my way. So we lost our groundskeeper, so.
So the start needs that. Start immediately.
Yes. Yeah, because I'm doing it myself.
It's a preferable idea.
Yeah.
So as far as humor goes, we're just, I mean, we're just listening also. So all of this is super helpful, but anecdotally, it's the same across the board. Everybody seems to feel like what I've heard anyways, that summer wasn't as bad as they were thinking it would be, but like because spring was bad, they assumed summer was going to be even worse, but um, but still just for the year or twenty twenty three, things are still really slow. And so I guess I'm just curious if that's kind of like our all feeling or or why? And then I do think that it's I really appreciate the comparison to twenty nineteen. Um, because I do think that there's some value in comparing to those numbers for sure. So I think the any change that anytime that we can get of those comparisons that would help us as a chamber. Anyway, we're trying to focus on before things kind of went, you want this? There was there was kind of this steady. Um, and then just kind of about the community, what our goals are of, you know, do we want to continue this or do we want to get back to this? And so uh, yeah, we're just kind of having a lot of conversations around what that looks like. Yeah.
Um, Lori, want to go next?
Uh, sure. Uh, trying to do a lot of analysis. Looking forward, trying to make plans. It appears that Grand County is currently suffering from a sales tax revenue downturn. I don't know, maybe uh, maybe that won't be true. Maybe when Chris gives us a report at the later part of the meeting, we'll find out that that's just a feeling and not data because the data bears it out. But it it feels like there's a strong trend in sales tax revenue to be down. Other than the fact that I don't think that locals will feel that in our community. Other than the fact that I have been told multiple times by multiple businesses that they can now turn left, and that's quite exciting. Um, it's funny how that's like a reflection for people. Oh, it's great. It's really quiet, but I can turn left. No problem. Even on a Sunday, I can turn that. And so that that's a little bit alarming, and I don't think that locals, other than the fact they can they I've also been told that they can get a seat in restaurants that it's not busy. So they've been able to experience enjoyment in their own town because they're able to go out to eat and visiting with servers about that. That has just been an interesting observation. Uh, but once that sales tax revenue gets below a point that our community amenities suffer, I believe that the community will actually feel it's important to have sales tax revenue that study steady, kind of what Lacey was saying. Do we really want to porpoise up and down? Or do we want to come up with a twenty twenty four plan that's going to actually work? I um, I've been thinking large picture about the fact that we have a vacancy in a directorship that was in charge of economic development, travel council, film commission, and then an assistant. It appears to me that that revenue is significantly affected and that there may be just a couple of grants funding that. So if TRT isn't going to just prompt that position up, I would like to discuss with our group, maybe in a special committee or something of eliminating those positions and just separating out travel council. So we can focus on what our community does well. Economic development needs to be run by some fabulous retired business person who sold their business, knows how to develop community in the business world, um, can do something separate from travel. We are trying so hard to morph one position into with multiple skills that are just not common skills. I think we really need to take this opportunity where we have two vacancies and readdress what our structure is so we can be more efficient and that hundred and twenty five thousand dollars that the director August was making um, with benefits and like seventy five that that Ben Alter was making, that's two hundred thousand dollars we can put towards not just targeting the elderly that we've been targeting, the sustainable elderly. Maybe we could actually put money towards getting families back to Moab and still continue with our sustainability program that seems to be vital to certain members of our community that they want to to keep. And I I hope that we can use our TRT and TRCCA revenue for community good as well as that pipeline. And I don't know if anybody's open to having a special meeting to discuss that. But I feel like we're getting to a point where if we don't start addressing this, the house is going to burn down.
I agree with Lori. I mean, I definitely I haven't called a special meeting yet. Um, so I don't know if anyone has experience with that or Mallory, you can kind of chime in. I don't know the protocol, someone needs to make a motion. But if we could have a special meeting the next week, also like what that looks like. I'm like. He's here.
So if you want to have a special meeting, um, it's kind of unique because we're very well lined out for county commission and code is a little vague. But what we do is five days notice, so you would want to discuss that here and set it out at least five days in advance.
Can I ask Mallory a question before we even start doing this? I mean, what what authority or whatever do we have to be able to even suggest to the county that they split these two positions again and have economic development one? And like a head of economic development and then head of travel council, which is what I think you're kind of suggesting, isn't it, Lori, is to split the offices back? Like they used to be.
I I think that's a great idea, Sharon.
So.
Sharon thought it.
I, well, that's how it used to be when I first started on this board. Right. We were separate.
So we all know that the reckless foundation opted not to take the proposal by the county to absorb the film commission in. But I would also like to add not only economic diversification, travel, but also film.
Well, it's a separate. It used to be in with the travel.
Yeah.
As far as.
Well, it is special meeting, perhaps. I know I've been messing with organizational charts and, you know, I am not an organizational behavior or structure specialist, but Mallory is. And I would love to. I would love to at least have a conversation about how do we do better as a community and use our resources in in a way that's going to help our community the most.
And I and not just the community, Lori, I'm I think even just the organizations themselves. Economic development will work better as economic development. And I think the travel council will be able to work better as travel council because the focus is now, since the TRT money cannot go towards economic development items anymore. It it gets it's separated and.
And and trying to do a trying to do management of those funds. It seems to me we would just be funneling TRT money to economic diversification to prop up that salary. Or I mean, what a billing nightmare. I think of attorneys that have to say, okay, we talked for fifteen minutes about this issue and fifteen minutes about that. And they have to bill it out separately on separate topics. Mallory must be having a nightmare. I I think.
Um, well, I would say what you guys definitely have the ability to do collectively or individually is to submit, you know, a a letter or emails to the commission. Um, of course, if you're going to do that collectively and on behalf of your council, you would need to have a meeting and wrote on that as an action item. Um, but you could certainly individually send things as a comment, the commission address. I don't know if that's helpful or if that's getting.
And I think, you know, with you saying that, I think we should probably have a special meeting and come up with a letter to send to the commission as a group.
I love it, Sharon.
And then.
So I was just saying, it's, I mean, I think that the board we have our purview is the TRT money advisory, right? And so as far as I guess, to me, the way I see it working as far as what they what is done with economic development, if it's outside of TRT money, if it's being funded other ways, that's not necessarily our jurisdiction, but anything to do that with TRT funding is, is that correct? I mean, is that right?
I would like to add historical background. When I first got on the commission, uh, eight years ago, we did not have an economic development director. And we missed out on a huge amount of money, a lot more than his salary. Because there is a lot of opportunities out there that one person is, you know, that is doing TRT. They don't have that time. They don't have that bandwidth. And it was really encouraged by you at Utah State University that we get an economic development director. And for a long time, it was under the planning department. And then it was decided, well, you know, our economic driver is tourism. So it makes some more sense to have it where it's an economic driver in that department because that's what you're working on is economic development. And we've been much more successful at getting, uh, you know, funds and monies that we were racing out on prior to that.
I, yeah, I agree with all that. I think the challenge has been that the general populace and particularly people who have their own businesses or running businesses feel as if we've skewed too far to one side.
That's.
Um, and with everything that's come to light, I think there needs to be a little bit of a reset. And I think that all we're doing is having suggesting to have a meeting to discuss it.
Yes.
Um, it doesn't mean we're going to go one way or another. But I definitely feel just from the pulse of people and business owners in town that there's some anxiety about what is being done and the perception of things that have happened. You know, August leaving and no statement coming out. You know, it it's all kind of gray, right? So I think anything that we could do as a board to be like, yes, we hear you and we recognize what you're saying and put out a five day notice and let us know and then publicize it and then let people chime in. And then I think that's our responsibility as the board.
Yes, I think we should have a special meeting and we can discuss the rest.
One thing I would say, if you guys do decide to go that route is that it might be helpful to share a few suggestions or different thoughts instead of just an approach of would like to see the structural change. Because I I think that the more ideas or feedback you can get that's I don't want to say digestible or or doable.
Right.
It's more likely to.
There's always some change. We we have a big group. Well, we should be able to come up with different ideas.
Based conversation.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
I agree. Do we need a motion to have a special meeting or just the five day?
Yeah, really have a motion. It's on the agenda. We just decided to have a.
Okay, so I'll I'll follow up with the email to see what time works best for everyone. Can zoom land? Thank you, Lori. Um, do you have anything else? I don't want to cut you off.
I think. No, I just I just want Grand County to be great.
Okay. So Rebecca.
Rebecca, you're next.
Thanks, Lori, for all of that. So the hotels for June, we had an incredible June. Really, uh, we were ten percent over year over year, which was amazing. Um, July and August, typical summer. It's busy, but not too busy. We're just trying to kind of get through August now into September busy season again and it we're pretty optimistic that it'll be a really great September.
Thanks for that. Um, everyone's gone. Um, next up on the agenda is love communications, purchase time entry and summer campaign report.
Okay, great. Thanks so much, you guys, for your time. We can, uh, we won't take too much time here. And so Melissa, we'll go through, yeah, the time entry and Melissa and the summer campaign. And then if you'd like, we can follow up with just an update on the analytics side of things or where we are progressing on that side. That's not okay, Melissa?
Yes, please, Mark. Are you willing to share your screen?
Uh huh. Yeah, I'm going to pull it up right now, so.
Okay. Sounds good.
Adam and I are going to tag team this.
Perfect.
Everyone can see that, okay?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. So this as a reminder, the time entry campaign, media campaign actually completed its course. What we have live still is through September is our paid search Google ads, so serving those up to, uh, you know, based on keyword searches and so forth and getting our audiences that way. But overall, we had the trip advisor ads, paid social and our KSL brand view as part of that campaign, uh, reminding individuals that they need to, uh, you know, book their you know, book the reservations and so forth. Um, so what I'll do now is I'm going to turn it over to Adam and he'll go through. Uh, we'll go through this in a pretty good clip, but please stop us at any time, but we'll go through the overall reports and so forth. Um, just as a reminder, though, on the creative messaging, what that looked like. You hear some trip advisor ads, for example. And then also your KSL ads on the far right and sponsored ad in the far left, too. And you see some sponsored ads here too for for the Google placement. Just reminding on the reservation site, again, that message, you know, April one through October thirty first, getting your reservations there. Okay, so we'll go through sort of the nuts and bolts of the the data on the campaign performance now. I'll turn it over to Adam.
Yeah, thanks. And I know there's a lot of numbers and text on this slide. So what I'm going to really focus on as I run through the results is kind of the main takeaways and how we performed compared to our benchmarks. Um, so the first two highlights I'd like to really point out is our post impression rate. So this is when folks see one of our ads and then later make it to the Discover Moab websites. Um, and we saw that come in at a point four zero percent clip, which for context, that is nearly double our summer campaign and more than triple our fly campaign. So meaning to say that when folks were seeing these ads compared to our other advertising efforts, they were much more likely to make it to our website, which is awesome to see. It means we were. It means we were reaching a more engaged audience and, you know, very tangibly speaking, they were going to our website as a resource, which is where we want them to end up. Similarly, on paid social, we had a one point six eight percent engagement rate, which is, this is when someone comments or likes a post or reacts or shares it, divided into the amount of impressions we delivered. And that was also um, higher than our benchmark, which is at one percent. It's worth noting, the average daily rate of the uh, bookings we observed from this campaign was at two hundred and fifty six dollars, which is higher than the baseline we normally observe in the county. So also really promising to see. Um, a couple of their big highlights is our strongest performing markets, I think, as expected, were Salt Lake City and Denver. Again, no surprise there, but we did see good engagement from our east and west coast markets as well. The last piece before I'll have you uh, move forward on the slides, Mark, is that folks that did make it from KSL, which was one of our channels, actually spent over two and a half minutes roughly on our website. So those that engage with our ads on KSL, we're really likely to consume our content, learn more about reservations in the timed entry system, which is great to see. So this is a quick snapshot of our market performance. As I mentioned, our top performer was Denver. There's a couple oddball markets we observed here. It's worth noting, we were national with some of our retargeting efforts. So you see Atlanta and Philadelphia in our top two booking markets. Um, it's worth noting with the way this works, Atlanta could be encompassed in a uh, what could be considered, say, a connecting flight potentially. So there's some reasons you would observe that market bubbling up to the top. But really, if you had to look at this from a thousand foot view, I would say Denver and Salt Lake were our top performers when combining bookings with our engagement metrics, because we like to look at both of them. So this is our trip advisor on platform performance. And so what this is going into is for our trip advisor ads specifically, we're able to actually look at the amount of bookings they observed across their different sort of pillars. So the far right of this, you're gonna see kind of in the middle of that slide, the total column. So this is the amount of booking dollars or revenue generated we observed across trip advisors, different areas of their website. So it ended up being a total impact of a little over one point five million, and we noticed most of that was from transportation and attractions, which is good to see. Um, trip advisor users, just a couple other high level insights that were exposed to Moab ads, viewed fifty percent more pages of Moab content, meaning to say they saw that and they were more likely to go to Moab specific pages. Um, they viewed more points of interest and they booked at about a sixty percent higher uh, clip, which is really cool, too. So basically saying that when folks saw our ads on trip advisor, they were more likely to look at Moab content and book ultimately. So I know a lot of the efforts in this was about timed entry, but it's cool to see that it also generated bookings beyond just increasing education. For KSL brand view, we've already touched on a few of these things. We saw really good uh, time spent with the article at just under two and a half minutes. Um, we saw some good shares and some good post impression rates and traffic from the article. So when folks are consuming content on this article, they're then going to the Moab website, spent around thirty two seconds, which is also good to see. So they're both getting educated and they're being directed to the proper resources. Paid social, um, going real fast through this, I think one of the biggest things to note is that our lookalike targeting outperformed our interest targeting with this media placement. So we saw really good engagement rate, no surprises there, but we did note that when we were going out into the entire network of Facebook and Instagram and finding people that looked like those who are already engaging with timed entry ads, that was the best way to promote engagement. So rather than just, than just saying, let me just serve up ads to people who are interested in going to Arches National Park. When we served up ads that were relevant to people engaging with content, we found more engaged audiences, which kind of increases the amount of education we're procuring from the folks we're reaching with our advertising. So kind of just amplifying our reach and ultimately our efficiency by seeing that tactic perform well. Really fast on paid search, it's worth noting, this is still live through the summer, so this is actually not dark, so people can still access these ads. This is when you type into Google, Arches National Park, and up at the top, you'll see a little ad, and that is where we are serving these things. Um, this is one of the best performing paid search campaigns I can specifically say I've seen conducted in the last year at Love Communications Client Portfolio. And your thirty percent click through rate is almost unheard of as an average. And if you go to the next slide, Mark, um, what I would really note is that it translated into on page performance uh, as well. So what this click through rate is, is someone who saw an ad and clicked through to make it to our website. Of folks that were doing that, um, they were spending nearly a minute on the site. So what we're really accomplishing with our paid search ads at an extremely high efficiency is capturing individuals who could be searching for anything related to Arches National Park and educating them about timed entry, making sure they're aware of what they need to be doing and that they're ultimately making their reservations ahead of time. So if I had to pick a channel that I think was top performing in this initiative, it would be the efforts we've conducted with our paid search because it's getting people to the website and accomplishing the core research or the core media objective of this campaign. Yeah, any.
On results. Yeah, um, Adam, I have a question. So I think um, back in your market slide, you know, Denver's number one, Atlanta, Philadelphia, Salt Lake, I think Phoenix was number six.
It is. Yes, and I know it's not a small problem from your guys, as you've seen, Phoenix is six.
Yeah, um, it's just, are we gonna kind of benchmark that to kind of watch Phoenix as a market? Because contour airlines is gonna be our, or we have that benchmarked.
Yes, I think that's.
Data.
Exactly. I think that's the exact thing we would be doing. And so we're gonna, it's gonna be nice with especially, I'll speak to it on the analytics side, is we'll have this media attribution as a benchmark, but we'll also just have non-media data as a benchmark for the amount of flights we're observing from Phoenix. So we'll get both, which is awesome, right? It'll be ad exposed and not ad exposed, which will ultimately help us make the most informed decisions.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But all in all, I would say if I had like a conclusion for this timed entry, really, really strong performance, and I would again hammer home that that paid search campaign was really remarkable. Um, so if there are some highlights from those, those efforts and dollars, I think it was, it'd be those two takeaways.
Yeah, and that's the campaign. That's part of the, the strategy also that's going through September. So we'll continue to report on that as well.
Exactly, which is awesome, because that's clearly doing what it's been intended to do, right? Um, and the data is very clear with it.
Okay, we'll keep marching on here. Um, with the summer campaign, of course, that which is still in full swing here, we're using our programmatic partner Sojourne to serve up ads as well as our um, native partner Story Jives, where we've got uh, a handful of articles uh, that are specific to uh, booking your trip and your itinerary and so forth. Then we've got our connected TV partner as well. And so what we're looking at here, we've got both drive and flight uh, markets, so Northern Utah, Denver, Colorado Springs, Vegas, Boise, Idaho Falls, Phoenix, and then Chicago, San Francisco, New York, Houston, Seattle and LA. And as specific to the, the connected TV, we've got um, we've got the Denver and LA markets, which essentially has just finished uh, yesterday. So. So actually, it'll go through this week through the thirteenth. We got one more essentially week of, of connected TV, but but the, the native articles and the programmatic ads will continue through mid to late September. Alright, so we'll just continue to go through here and report on this. As you see on the native, so when, on the native articles and the ads that we've got, so when somebody is clicking on the ad, it'll bring them right to your website to focus on those specific areas of interest. So whether it's an epic destination any season, a three day Moab itinerary. So the idea here is to obviously drive uh, bookings and, and travel time throughout the summer. So we really wanted to showcase a little bit more of like the dark skies itinerary, the water and so forth, because obviously, you know, heat is gonna be a little bit of a concern, so we really wanted to focus on some of these uh, evening dark skies and, and the water adventures and so forth. As shown in this creative here. Okay, let's go through the uh, executive summary here on the summer campaign. Of course, we'll continue to report on this, but here's the latest report.
Yeah, definitely. And so this is gonna be a briefer than timed entry, just based on how much data we have right now. As Mark mentioned, we're still ongoing, so it's only gonna be about four slides. We're just shy of twenty uh, I should have made a joke there. You know, there's only thirty or forty slides in this section. It's gonna be nice and breezy. Um, but what we're looking at right here is uh, just shy of twenty million impressions delivered. A couple of things to note, this is why we had the comparisons to time entry. We are seeing a lower post impression rate, so folks that are going to our website after engaging with our ads, and we are seeing a lower average daily rates. Um, we are reaching a wider net of individuals and not being as specifically targeted with the summer campaign. That's somewhat intentional. So we would expect a little bit lower of efficiencies. That said, we have seen the post impression rate grow over the course of the summer campaign, and we would hope to see that number exceed perhaps a point two oh or a point two five by the campaign's conclusion. Um, some big highlights is this campaign's already generated over one point mil, one point one million dollars in uh, enriched hotel revenue. So this is when someone would have engaged with our ad and later booked to somewhere in Grand County. Um, and then similarly, our top markets are a lot of the same, Las Vegas, Denver, and then we do see Phoenix as a top three market here specifically um, with this campaign, which again, knowing what's going on with the airport and, and airlines, I think is, is good to see. Um, and then the last piece is one of our partners we're using uh, to serve up banner advertisements is called Sojourne. So they're serving up ads all over the world wide web, so long as you've in uh, shown an interest or think you would want to travel to Moab through behavioral targeting. They have around a sixteen to one um, return on ad spend right now, which is really good. Um, we're gonna basically report on a final number for that when the campaign's concluded, but we're seeing again, good efficiencies early on. Go quick through markets. Um, what is promising here is besides Salt Lake, Denver and Phoenix, we see two uh, fly markets in San Francisco and New York appearing. And the reason we like to see those two markets in the top five is because we know they have higher average daily rates and length of stays, right? So they're gonna feel that, they're gonna fill the town a little bit better and spend out of their wallets a little bit more, perhaps than someone coming down from Salt Lake or from Denver specifically. Connected TV, so it's a little small for you guys probably, but it's worth noting that people that have seen our connected TV ads, which as a reminder of what connected TV is, is this would be any streaming television ad. So you could be on uh, YouTube TV or a sling. We're seeing that these individuals are actually going to the Discover Moab website at an eighty percent higher clip than people who haven't seen an ad. So this is a really good metric to basically prove out that when people are seeing our ads on, you know, Adam watching baseball, they're more likely to go to discovermoab.com and actually look at our content, engage with it and potentially plan a trip. And then our last piece here is just native articles. What I would highlight here is uh, the article that people are spending the most time with is the three day Moab itinerary, which is really cool to see, right? Because that's a curated piece of content to get people thinking about what multiple days would look like, not that one to two night length of stay, right? Really encouraging people to stay longer, which we know results in more dollars being spent in markets. So that has been the content piece that people are engaging with the most. And then that little top performing image there on the bottom is just a nice combination of colors, something to consider in our advertisements. So that's the short and sweet of it for the summer campaign. Like I mentioned, there will be a more robust wrap up report with some of those more concrete recommendations like timed entry. You know, where we called out paid search as a top performing channel, but I think summer's chugging along nicely. We would just want to see that post impression rate rise as we head into the end of the campaign. Any questions I can help answer?
I have a quick question for you. When did we start the summer campaign?
Do you have that off the top of your head, Mark, from the media?
Right here, let me just pull it up just to double. Let's see, we started it uh, mid-May.
Okay.
Specifically for the, the programmatic uh, ads and then uh, pardon me, with the, uh, what started first with the native articles about mid-May, then that followed with our uh, display ads. And then connected TV started in mid-June, so I'd say native in mid-May. And in fact, let me just pull this up really quick and you can see this for yourself. And hopefully you can see this uh, relatively well on your screen.
Okay, so my question is, um, are we, should we be starting this like a year in advance for like the next summer? Like, are we adequate, adequately preparing for the next year's summer?
It's a good question. Yeah, we, you, there's kind of two approaches we've always taken with that. So with our uh, partner we use to track bookings in Adara, they do provide us, provide us with booking windows um, from the ad exposure timeline. So Adam saw an ad, when did I book? And then when did I arrive, right? So kind of a search to book and a book to arrival. We use that to kind of guide how far in advance we should be planning or serving up ads, right? There's a lot of, and so what we have observed is our booking window tends to be between thirty and forty five days for y'all. And so with the goal of this summer campaign being to try to drive uh, visitation increases between July fourth and Labor Day, that's why we were tactical in terms of kind of starting around that May-June period with a lot of our media. Because that arrival window would land us loosely, right? I mean, this is an average number. Not everyone plans this way within that window.
Okay, so, because the booking window is shorter during the summer months. So, okay, I gotcha.
Yeah, and, and that said, what we would say though, is I completely agree with you in terms of how far in advance we should think. That's why you never want to be on one summer and off the next summer, because advertising should always be building awareness over time and the same concept, right? I mean, most folks probably book a vacation within thirty, forty to forty five days of having the idea, but you need to be aware of wherever the hell you're trying to go in the first place. Right? So that's why you want to make sure you're consistent with your advertising in terms of when you're flying at least.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Any other questions on those two?
You know, so any questions? Yeah, thank you for the update, love. Really appreciate it. Um, next, we have the presentation about the international Moab.
There's only three slides on this one. You get to keep listening to me ramble up here in Zoom Cloudland, and then I'll finally leave you guys alone.
Adam, thanks so much. I'm gonna pull this up again.
This one will be really fast, because I've just got some key dates to share with you guys. So, as you know, we've been working on building out our analytics and dashboard suites for y'all. Um, and this is a combination of working with Symphony, who is the actual dashboard company, Place Your AI, who is helping handle the mobile data, and then our internal systems in Amplify. If you go to the next slide, Mark, we've been keeping a loose status grid when August was around, and now Melissa's in the fold on this in terms of where we're at. Um, pretty much where we're at is we're very close to launching the internal versions of these dashboards. Short term rental data is ingested, mobile data is good to go, all of our marketing data, our website data. All we're waiting on is some spend data with Visa View, which is held up at a state level and a local level contractually, and then getting um, some lodging data onboard into the platform. But if you go to the next slide, Mark, I, I told you this would be fast. His next steps, we're anticipating an internal dashboard launch in two to three weeks. So this will be the first pass of the dashboards where our team will have access, Melissa will have access, and we can start sharing out this data and figuring out which key uh, KPIs we want to include in the public dashboard for everyone to have access to, right? So we would anticipate potentially in the next month or two, we would do a walkthrough of what's available, have a loose brainstorm session, and then we would work with Symphony to start talking about what a public facing uh, version of this might look like. And that, as promised, is the analytics update. So really just a couple of weeks for internal uh, statuses, but I'd imagine we'll have some stuff more comprehensive here in the probably next month or the month after.
That in two, three weeks?
Go to wait.
So by the next meeting, we'll be able to see. Okay.
Yeah. That's the, that's the goal.
And beyond Discover Moab?
Yes. No, actually, it's not gonna be in Discover Moab. It's gonna be Grand County because you need to leave to the community, because it's covered much more for the visit.
Is it gonna be on that tab where you go through?
Yeah, and one point of clarification is that public facing version on Grand County, that's the last deliverable. I would say that would be closer to September, October, just because we want to basically decide internally amongst us what data points we want on that dashboard. So what's being published in two to three weeks is what stakeholders, Melissa, we can access as an advisory board. And then we could say, do we really want the public to have every single piece of information we're allowing them to track, which is the conversation that I think could be had or not, right?
And who would have that conversation? Who would make the determination about who gets to see what?
So everyone here would be able to see everything that the, that Melissa's team would have access to, would be totally fine. And then I think the determination would be a combination of Love's recommendation and a good, a good use case of where we wouldn't provide literally all of the data just for this conversation is the mobile tracking, because mobile tracking is very complicated. You can do a lot of different data views with it. So we would probably create a public specific version of that data force, data source, rather than providing them thirty, forty data views, right? So I think it would be a combination of Melissa's team and the Love team, bringing a recommendation of what we believe should be publicly accessible. But it's worth noting, we would never hide the data we're accessing. It's just what makes the most sense in terms of a quick dashboard for the average individual to go grab some information.
So just to confirm that I'm hearing what you're saying, it sounds like your dashboard options may be open in a couple of weeks. But to have data, we can actually analyze, we're looking at November optimistically.
No, I would say the public facing board, it depends how fast we move in terms of what we think is best. I think what would look closer is probably October. Um, but that's worth noting, too, that that would be a portal that an individual like me could log in myself and do all the filtering. Once the dashboards are live internally, we can pull the data on the love side that anyone requests. So we'd be open to fielding requests. It's that user interface that's gonna take a little longer to build.
One more question. The information that we will be looking at in October, what parameters will we have been gathering data from?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so the parameters that we're looking at is that status grid I shared. So I can provide a by partner breakdown, but it's lodging data. So this would be Smith transient room tax data that's relaying occupancy rates, um, things of that nature. Short term rental information, so how the air, the Airbnb VRBO's, VRBO market is looking along those same parameters. We'd also be looking at website visitation data, marketing. We'd also be looking at website visitation data, marketing performance and some light spending data in market for lodging and restaurants specifically. And then lastly, mobile visitation and event tracking data as well would be the main pillars. And so mobile visitation is how many cell phone devices are we tracking coming into the county year over year into parks to help determine visitation patterns and trends to kind of pair with the economic indicators we're seeing. And then lastly, Symphony also provides us with some economic development and national park visitation numbers that would be accessible as well. So it's a whole suite of things is what we'd be looking at, and that is why there is a process by which when we're designing the public user interface, we wanna make sure it's as streamlined as possible and not too many data views, too confusing, and it's telling the right stories and it's easy access.
Two quick more questions. Will, will activities be analyzed, rafting, horseback riding, and what time period will this data, will it be from January first of twenty twenty-three that we'll have data from? That, those two things.
Yeah, great question. So for the first one, that's the type of stuff that from our perspective and the contract analyt, the analytics contract is structured this way. That will be an ongoing feedback loop for us. So the answer is yes, we can look at rafting activity based things. And they'll all be accessible specifically with website and mobile visitation data. But what we'll rely on is specifically with Melissa's team is the feedback loop of what are we hearing from people? What would they like to see? What questions do we need to answer, right? So all of those answers will be achievable with these dashboards at the outset. But what we're planning on doing over time is adding tailored views of those we know we'll come back to. So if we know every single year around a certain time period, we need to learn more about rafting, we'll build out additional dashboard views. That's covered in the contract, right? For that second piece, the bulk of these data sources are actually available from twenty twenty-one onward. So we have a really good batch of historical data to deal with, but that's not every single data source. I know lodging is around middle of twenty twenty-one where we have information and insights, and short-term rentals may start in twenty twenty-two. But mobile data, website data, marketing data goes as early back as twenty twenty-one and in some cases twenty twenty.
Melissa and whomever gets to decide this, I sure would like to see what our activities are generating.
Yep. Okay.
Anyone have any other questions? Okay, I think this is it, love. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Take care. Have a good day.
Thanks, guys.
And next presentation about the international co-op.
Okay, that's me. Lory, can you see my screen?
I can, thank you.
Sorry, this is a lot of information. So I'm just gonna be sure. So after that commissioners approved that budget amendment, uh, the team, we decided to apply for our co-marketing, focus on the international market. So the state of Utah, uh, we're working together and they offer us to apply for this co-marketing, Germany, Australia and Switzerland. And of course, we select that no cost, cause it's no cost. And then we did a brain store with the youth office of tourism and the economic development team. What would be beneficial for the office? So we went with some advertising in different with different agencies that they're gonna be focused on consumer when it's, when I say consumers, they are gonna talk directly with the people that are coming to Utah. Because I'm, I'm another person that is talking face to face with the people that are coming here, but I'm talking face to face with the agency. So that's the part of the word that the agency do. Saying we travel trade, we, I actually worked with this with other DMOs and we decided to partner for the most for the cost of Euro wins, discover show. So these agencies, they're gonna do a road trip around these different cities in Germany, and they're gonna talk about Utah, in this case, it's gonna be Moab, Kanap, Salt Lake and Park City. So this is the four DMOs that we decided to go with.
Have we ever done that before?
No, this is actually the first time that we are focused on international.
Sounds great.
Mm-hmm. So this is what we did. And the total cost for this one is nine thousand three hundred. Commissioners approve. And then the other one, it was focused on the UK and Ireland. Saying no cost, we went without, no, no cost. And then this is, um, I will let you say this is a magazine. This is one of the best magazines in UK. So we focus on that. And then option two, I would like to say, yes, I do, we, uh, this one. This is a little cheaper, five thousand three hundred fifty. And I just wanna tell that it's gonna be good. This is working between twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. Um, commissioners are propped to, so we are good on these two. Co-international marketing, I think is, I saw a little bit of the numbers from what you guys say, international is coming back. So they're the most sustainable travels and that's what I'm pushing this twenty twenty-three. And I think I would like to start doing a twenty twenty-four strategy. Bringing international, I thought with USA, Brand USA, and they say that we were expecting to to come back after COVID in twenty twenty-six, but it's, it's been, it looks like you wanna, we're gonna reach a little bit early, maybe twenty twenty-five, we're gonna start. All the international coming back. That's what USA, Brand USA say to me. So that's good. That's for me. Do you like, have any questions?
I don't. Okay. Um, thank you. And then next up is an update of the twenty twenty-three UOP co-op marketing.
So I, you guys see in the package, you guys see all what we submit together. And all of us did a great presentation at the Capitol. And Love Communication also participated in this presentation. It went so well. They didn't have any questions and the rumor say that maybe Moab is gonna have all the money. So everything that was a yes, so that happened million dollars. So that's good. And we're gonna have this answered at the end of August.
Okay.
The end of August. So maybe the first week of September, so.
Okay.
And I showed that, so you guys know what's, what we submit.
Um, and then update of the South and North Billboard.
Okay, so you guys know that we were working really hard on that billboard since last year. Uh, but we decided, um,
Who decided?
We, we, we as a team, always as a team, uh, we decide to work. We love communication. Robert is here too. So we, we can wait. Please be bored. Please keep your speed down while you're enjoying our time. So we're gonna pay our billboard in North and South. Now, so commissioners approved that. That's good. Looks beautiful. I like it. And Robert, when we're gonna have that billboard?
Um, installation is probably about four to six weeks.
Four to six weeks. Well, yeah, we reached the guy who would put that, he's, he's on vacation right now, so.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And the commissioners have approved these now?
Yeah, they already approved this one.
Mm-hmm.
They came up with it.
No, I don't, no, I don't. I was here for that meeting. Yeah, yeah. I was not expecting that part of the agenda to last so long.
That was to compromise.
Yes.
All right, thank you for the update. Um, next up, Van Wango platform update.
Robert, you wanna talk?
Sure, this isn't, it's, it's, it's a platform. It's an art trails cast. So people can sign up for free. And if it has all the different sculptures and murals in town, and if you visit a certain number of them, you win prizes. Um, and also have like certain restaurants in town that offer discounts. So if they go in there and they check in, with this app, you have to check in at every location. You can get like ten percent off or whatever. So it's a way to keep people in the downtown area and generate revenue for the downtown businesses. So it's pretty good. We can expand it in the future. We can onboard more restaurants and other businesses as time goes on. So yeah, just a way to keep people in town and we're ready to launch this week.
This week?
Yeah.
Wait. Mm-hmm. How are you gonna send it out? Are you gonna do like one of those blasts that you did for the?
Email blast?
Yeah, we'll do an email blast. We have a, a nice poster that nice to go into the back.
This one actually. So we're gonna, we're gonna. Mick, we're gonna put this post.
It's not the billboard. It's, it's a different poster.
We just need to pay.
Another poster for the mic?
Yep.
Do you have, you have a landscape person. She's willing to go there.
We'll train.
Is it something that we could put the link like on Chambers?
Yes, a hundred percent.
We'd appreciate it.
That'd be fantastic. We're gonna have it on the website. There's a, a form on the website for visitors to sign up for it. It's completely free, but you have to go through the checkout process and all that.
Where are the prizes?
The prizes are artworks by local artists, Tamara Phillips.
Oh, wow.
She did a series of stickers for us that we really, really like. And we also, um, for some of the bigger prizes, we have some art prints that we'll be sending out, so.
Then also we are working with a newspaper. That newspaper can communicate that to a lot of the community that they can participate of this.
Right. We're looking to get a lot more businesses to sign up for.
Right now we have just seven?
There's seven restaurants.
Seven restaurants.
But the company has told us that their experiences, once it launches, all the businesses see it and they want to be part of it.
Uh-huh.
Would you want to say something about the Chamber of Commerce to get businesses to participate?
Mm-hmm.
Our representation.
Okay.
Robert, you already said that, I guess, the restaurants. I feel like I saw something about. We did, we did a last email.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, um, I remember seeing it. I guess I just didn't realize about what I passed situation where I don't know, the information that I read was not what I'm seeing here. It's like, oh, good. I'll check it out again. Definitely, we can send it out again too.
That might be a good idea. Yeah. Great, cuz you miss emails.
For sure.
And it's free to each of the businesses and the restaurants that participate, which is something that, right? To participate.
Right.
If the restaurant wants to be on the path, then they don't have to pay anything, the same as people that.
Exactly.
Yeah, it's free to for everybody, for the restaurants and also for the visitors.
Who gives up the prizes? You guys are?
We got.
Partners.
So we have a platform, an internal platform that they tell us, because when you don't allow this platform, you fill out a form, and then they know who is Jenny and where Jenny go. And then I can say, oh, Jenny went to, Jenny went to ten euros and she, I mean, she is kinda mirror. So I said, oh, Jenny will win a prize. But we have that, so Robert and I, we have that. People.
That's really, that's a, is that a lot? Well, hopefully.
So we can tell you where you go.
Yeah.
Are we tracking everybody now with the new dashboard?
Yeah.
That's a whole new vibe going on.
Awesome. That's exciting. Um, perfect. Any other questions about Van Wango? Next up, budget twenty twenty-four, right, already list and report for TRT and TRCC.
All right. So this is a statutory, so what we're talking about is statutory duty that's in the state code for all the tourism tax advice reports, which you all are on. And the requirement is the producer prioritize prioritizes expenditures for TRT and the TRCC taxes, which are restaurant car rentals as well. So let me share the screen. I'll just start off by going over uh, what we came up with last year. What it looks like. So this is the letter that we came up with last year, a little bit of narrative in the beginning. But it's, it's compartmentalized. And so you can see we've got, the first part is the, uh, the TRT. And so we have some projected collections. Um, this year actually down relative to twenty twenty-two, about twelve, thirteen percent. But I'm thinking that we're probably gonna have to bump, you know, our, uh, projections possibly down uh, the next year together. So it's a good side. And so we've got, uh, two sort of main components to the TRT that gets split off as a mitigation component, which, you know, tends to go towards, um, essential services. And I can go, I'm gonna go into this in more detail, but it's predominantly law enforcement, search and rescue. Little bit goes to the museum and some other places. Um, last year just sort of recommended continuing, um, along that route. And the main uh, objective with the mitigation is to predominantly offset general fund expenses. And that helps keep property taxes down. Um, and so when we use the TRT mitigation money to offset a general fund expense, you know, it, it, it's more beneficial than if we were to use it to offset some other expense that wasn't relevant to the general fund. Um, and so we try to maintain that, uh, strategy. Uh, but you, you know, it's up to you to advise on that however you want. But last year made a recommendation to carry on with that strategy. Then moving on to, uh, what we're calling the establish and promote side of the, uh, TRT. So last year we had economic diversification activities, which is not gonna be an option for, uh, next year. And then within the context of economic diversification, um, I had all these different priorities that we listed out. Um, and then same with, uh, recreation, film production conventions. Those are all sort of statutory, statutorily run together due to the restrictions on them. And, uh, the state code right now anyway is still, uh, indicating that there's a uh, no more than one fifth of the thirty-seven percent that goes into this fund, um, can go toward rec home and convention activities. And then of course we've got the tourism promotion component. And, uh, we all listed out a bunch of prioritized, uh, strategies, uh, that way as well. Uh, the TRCC funds, uh, then these are restaurant, car rental and O H V, uh, taxes. So let's see, we've got a couple of priorities, uh, that were included. The, the front of this, my, and again, I'll go into more detail, but the front of the TRC, somebody goes into, uh, paying for Old Spanish Trail Arena and Grand Center operations. So that's what the letter looked like. And you can see it's not full for detail, but it does establish a priority of activities in each category of spending. And so that's the general gist of, of what we're trying to do. I'm gonna be ideal, try to get it done next month, but if we had to push it to October, you know, that will work also. We just need to be able to get these priorities to the budget advisory board in time for them to give them due consideration in terms of how they put together the budget for, uh, the TRT and TRCC funds. Okay.
Hey Chris, what is that date that they need now, am I?
Uh, well, I would prefer it to be done, you know, in, in September if possible, but if, um, if that's not gonna work, you know, we could get it done in October. But your meeting in October is really probably like the point in time where it has to get done.
Right.
It'd be, you know, it's somewhat advantageous to get it done in September because then it gives the budget advisory board more time to think about, consider what you're saying, what, and what you're proposing. Whereas the closer you get to the end of the budget process, the more it's gonna be sort of, you know, rushed and consideration. But so definitely, you know, try to, you know, get it done. And I think, you know, and we could talk about what's gonna be helpful in terms of format that you guys want. Um, in turn, you know, with regard to how you wanna put this together. Um, you know, maybe we could create spreadsheets with some watch sheds and get franked them or something. I don't know. Um, we can talk about how that. You know, what, what assistance would be useful to you all?
Can I ask just a question on last year's?
Yeah.
Has anything been done with the Grand County or the Grand Center, um, equipment at all?
Yeah. Yeah, so yeah, I think, uh, you already, uh, we improved a new, I think, fifteen thousand dollar projector, a bunch of audio, video. A new, I think fifteen thousand dollar projector, a bunch of audio video equipment for compensing. So I think that was one of the main complaints. Um, with regard to acoustics, I mean, they've done some acoustic treatment already. I have to check in to see if they've done any more. Um, but we kind of, uh, prioritize at this point, just upgrading the technology. So there is.
Awesome.
Have, you know, reasonable consequences there. That's gonna improve. I can't remember what the improved technology was at Star Hall.
I think it was kind of along the same lines with.
Just like upgrades A V stuff.
And the sound system and stuff.
Yeah, I'm not sure if that's happening.
I don't think so.
It's still bad. So anyway, um, I'm not really familiar with, and I don't know that Sean or maintenance guy is necessarily familiar with what upgrades need to happen. So if somebody is familiar with what should happen, maybe we get that info to me and I can start working on it.
Is it possible to look at the TRCCA funds that have been projected at one point four? Um, and look at the line items of what have been spent? And if we can look at the TRT, what line items and how much they are? So that we can start to prepare for what we believe the priorities should be for twenty twenty four?
Yes, that's actually where we're moving to right now. So I'm going to share a different screen with our, uh, budget software. And so I'm just gonna roll through all these different funds and walk through. Um, what we got budgeted for this year. And, you know, at this point, keep it into account, you know, that we're probably, you know, looking at. A projection that's gonna be a bit lower than what we're, what we're looking at for revenue, revenue one of this year.
Can I, can I ask the general question before we get into all of these specifics? And I know that there, that this was brought up at a commission meeting and I, and I apologize because I didn't watch it, but I, I know that I was maybe under the same assumption. That there was like a two thousand nineteen floor, uh, like once we hit. This two thousand nineteen revenue, then the, the percentage shift. Can you help me understand, like, if that's still the case, if not, when that changed, or if I misunderstood all along, or?
No, so yeah, it's basically, um. The, the, the expenditure fiscal year, I think, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
Or, uh, thirty seven percent, whichever is greater. So in twenty twenty one, you know, our TRT virtually doubled. So immediately thirty seven percent was way, way more than the fiscal year twenty eighteen. So I mean, to get back to the floor, we'd have to see like massive losses. So at this point, thirty seven percent is way, way more than the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen spend.
Okay, so twenty, just because I've had questions on my, and I feel like I need to get back in.
So yeah, it's either or. You know, the point of that was that.
Whichever is greater.
When the legislation passed that, that was like solidifying that we're never gonna go below twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen relative to our advertising spend.
Right.
But we almost immediately doubled our TRT in like one year. And so it was, uh, pretty quick that we got way, way past that point.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. So Fund sixteen is a new fund. It's our economic development fund. Um, and it's considerably, it's gonna be a lot easier to work with this one because the prior fund that we used sort of was. The fund that was started, you know, almost twenty years ago. And, uh, it just evolved over time, you know, as things, uh, came up, they added new accounts, which is a huge mess. But now everything is well organized, uh, and categorized, you know, the same according to statute. And so it's gonna be a lot easier, I think, this time around to interpret, uh, the chart accounts and make it relevant. That's what we have to do here. So, uh, first off. We've got revenue into Fund sixteen, which is gonna be predominantly, uh, TRT revenue. And so we, we split it out, uh, this year, TRT promotion. So we did a budget amendment. So what we're looking at, um, is this green column. This is this twenty twenty three budget right here is what we started off with. And then this green, green column is, uh, the mid-year budget amendment. So we're actually working out this green column. So you can see that, um, you know, the, uh, diversification funds have been reduced greatly and then the, uh. Tourism promotion funds have been increased, increased reciprocally. So that adjustment's been made and this picks up. Uh, also the, uh, the projected one bill split out for, uh, rec home conventions. So those are the three main categories. Next year, you know, the diversification will go, uh, to zero. And then tourism promotion and, uh, rec home convention, at least from the TRT perspective, you know, we might inject some general fund money in. For diversification, but that, that yet to be decided yet. Um, and then, uh, there's a couple of other revenue streams that we have to pick up that are non TRT related. So this would be like the rural county grant program, a rural, rural opportunity, uh, grant. Um, co-op marketing grant. And then any contribution from the fund balance that, you know, this is like money that's basically in the TRT bank, so to speak. That we're gonna pull out of the fund balance and budget to spend. So you can see that we've, uh, you know, in our budget minute, you know, fairly dramatically increased the, uh, contribution from the fund balance. And that's predominantly by taking all of the. Diversification money that was sitting in the bank and say, we're gonna pull that all out, spend it this year. Because again, we, we, we were able to spend it as the, uh, for diversification purposes. So this is where we're at on the revenue side. And this is, you know, again, relating to TRT at this point. Uh, Fund sixteen is predominantly TRT again, with some of these, uh, exceptions of these grant, grant extremes. But then, um, we've got four, four main, uh, you know, financial departments, we'll call them. Um, so we've got economic diversification. Again, this is, you know, not probably something that you guys will have to address. Cause if it is funded, it's not gonna be tourism tax funded. It'll be, you know, general five, a general time funded. And I don't, you know, I don't know yet what that's gonna look like. But here we have, uh, rec, um, convention budget. Most of these line items are related to, uh, fund commission. But these ones at the bottom, um. Are related to some other expenditures. So it got, uh, a contribution to the Recreation Special Service District for Youth Recreation Programming. Um, and then we've got a contribution to the Trail Ambassador Program, Responsible Rec Program. And we also made a commitment to the city for, uh, helping put the, the pilot transit program. So that's everything that's currently in, uh, the rec home convention budget. You know, there's some. Issues that we're gonna have to resolve this year if TRT remains low because it's statute poorly limited. Um, if TRT decreases where we project, that means we have to also reduce our budget. Uh, so it may be the case that we're gonna have to, in order to like make this. Budget work with statute, we may have to decrease some of the line items or bring some general fund money in to make up for it. It's not really a big deal, but it's just something to bring up. Then we got the big, you know, the large budget, which is tourism promotion budget. And this is where, uh. You know, all the, all the activities related to tourism promotion exists. And, uh, I think probably Melissa's. Would be the best to go over this. And I think, you know, we fairly recently went over a lot of this because we, you know, we, uh, August presented the, the big budget amendment. And so if you recall that presentation, you know, that's essentially, uh, a good overview of what, where we're at right now. Uh, tourism promotion budget and what it's all about. But if we haven't, if you have any questions or anything, any details you want to dive into right now. I know Melissa and I can take stab at trying to answer those. Uh, the final main category of spending in this fund is gonna be the non TRT expenditures. So, you know, I made, when we do our, we're required to do an, uh, annual report on, uh, tourism tax expenditures. And so it's useful for me to be able to separate out TRT and non TRT funding so that I can produce that report easily. And so that's what we've done here. We've got, um, a separation. And so these are the expenditures that go out the rural county grant program, the rural opportunity program, or the co-op marketing grant program. And so this is essentially the other, the expense side of that revenue. Any questions on Fund sixteen before we?
I have one quick question. How are we evaluating the success of the line items? That were allocated in twenty twenty three?
So, well, let's, uh, give, give an example and we'll try to answer that question.
So pick anything that. I mean, there's, can you go back to slide? We'll just run.
Yeah, okay. So a lot of it, I mean, some of this is all admin, is administrative and probably, you know, we don't need to like go and do great detail talk about. Well, that's a bolt of administration, but you know, probably what you're asking about is, uh, the. Benefit then of various advertising.
Correct.
Programs.
Like if Melissa had to rate the effectiveness of these.
Would that be paid media?
Paid media. So paid media is all the advertising that we're doing. So like that fly campaign, like the summer campaign, also inside of the paid media, we have billboards. Maintenance of billboards, uh, the, how much we pay for, for, for bill work. That's why we have in paid media. Then, for example, you have data, our data is all the. All the platform that we're using turn. It's not the data from love communication. That's in another item. This is the data that we use, like Crown Reef. I use Crown Reef. Crown Reef is a platform. They help me. To look for, uh, pictures around more. The people are taking pictures and they can pull the pictures and that's for access of those pictures instead of paying that for dollar.
But I think our new data, um, arrangement was lots, you know, like make a big difference in terms of. Our ability to assess, you know, the effectiveness of some of these things, right?
Can you tell me the difference between responsible rec advertising and then paid media? Like, why are they separate?
So the, uh, responsible rec advertising has been of the, you know, associated with, uh. More, uh, local messaging. Um, whereas paid media is, tends to be outside of the county.
Like maybe the billboards would be not responsible rec advertising, or are they not?
Uh, it could be, you know, it's all, uh, sort of in the same category, but the responsible rec messaging tends to be more, uh. Or is intended anyway to be more related to, like, working with the business community on set of programs. And, um, you know, producing materials and then also engaging, uh. They have plans to, you know, offer some, some trainings. Uh, so that kind of thing. So a lot of it ends up, you know. Being associated with the programs that, uh, are sort of the interface between economic development and responsible rec. And so the other category of spending, um, that we saw coming out of the rec home conventions budget, that's like purchase on the ground. Trail faster work, where the other is more, uh, promotional, uh, messaging type stuff that's, uh, you know, I. Uh, Maddie has a breakdown on, on all that that I can, you know, bring to a future meeting.
But you know, it would be, it's like when we're looking at priorities, to be able to see how those are split up and what line items are within those.
Yeah.
Yeah. Also any data that, that we have.
Yeah.
Can be collected on it.
Yeah.
Like any ROI that, if any advertising that we had. You know, impressions is good, but what's the ROI?
Yeah. Well, I mean, and again, you know, this may not be, you know, a popular point to make, but. Understand the responsible rec messaging, the return on investment is gonna be a decrease on the impact of our resources and not necessarily profit.
Oh, yeah. No, I'm not talking about anything having to do with rec. I'm talking about if we advertise to bring everybody here.
Yeah.
Like, how many heads and beds did we get, you know?
Yeah, and love communication can provide that. I think a few, a few travel advisory board may, they. They respond to that question.
Yeah. But, you know, and I think that Buzz is gonna take care of, uh, that, that, that side of things, but. Anna and Maddie both also have, uh, some ideas about how to track the metrics for the responsible rec program. See, you know, like, if, if it's making, uh, uh, an impact on vandalism or off trail travel. Or like, you know, group in the back country or whatever the metrics are that we're chasing down. With that program, I think that they're, you know, trying to put together a way of analyzing the effectiveness of that program. Using those types of metrics.
Yeah, I think, I mean, the easiest way to track that, I mean, it would seem like emergency services, the amount of. What we've had to do from accounting standpoint to, you know, fix vandalism or how many rescues do we have to do? And looking at the correlation there, usually the best way to look at that, which is super important.
Sure.
And one thing. How will we gain access to that? Sorry about that, Lacey. Chris, how do we gain access to all this data? That we're supposed to be mashing through really relevant things that Maddie has about. The, the responsible tourism that, okay, this program has shown this kind of decrease. Because obviously those are really important factors as well as seeing, seeing these spreadsheets. To be able to study and, and, and have quality input for you.
Oh, yeah. So, I mean, one thing to realize is that the, a lot of the programming is, is, uh, just in its design phase right now. Especially with regard to interfacing with the business community and, you know, establishing a training program. So that's all in its button design phase right now. And so until we launch it, we actually get going on it. We can't start collecting data, obviously. So a lot, and you know, the responsible rec program is basically only like one year old. So, you know, there's not gonna be a ton of data that we can even pull on it, you know, because it's a very new program. But in, in time, moving along, I absolutely agree. We need to like track metrics and make sure that what we're doing is effective.
Yeah. I mean, my worry is when you're saying that TRT money's gonna be off and then. You know, responsible rec absolutely has to be done, but if people aren't coming here, they're not going on the trails either, right? So it's kind of a chicken and egg kind of situation, so.
Oh, yeah. But, you know, there's, uh, uh, in my opinion, always compromises to be made.
Yeah.
You know. And, uh, I think that it's important that we all realize that.
So one thing I think that, I, and like, this is just bringing it up to put a pin in it for our conversation when we have it. But finding it, like, we're talking about finding the effectiveness, the, you know, there were really great reports from love on the campaign about Arches. But when I'm looking at Arches numbers and what that actually means, we are still down. To like two thousand fourteen numbers, fourteen and fifteen.
Are you talking visitation?
Visitation, sorry. And so like, where do we find the balance of what's like? Yes, people are learning about this, this reservation system, but no people are coming, but. You know, so just something to think about when we're talking about it.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. It seems like that was, that was the point of the, um. Um, reservation system was to cut down on the amount of people that would come and not overcrowd.
Right. But they were looking at.
Spread it out.
It was to spread it out. And they were looking at two thousand nineteen numbers is what their, like, full capacity for the reservation system would be, but we.
Well, they did, uh, they did, they hired an economist to study it before they actually did it. The economist even said, you know, that there's probably gonna be two, three years of reduced visitation before it picks back up and start to grow again. And I think that's exactly what we're seeing.
Right.
So, you know, I think the big question with that, you know, is, is there, uh. Prediction that people will get used to it and then will go, you know, into the positive.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say is that it's like, you, you do the reservation system, obviously it's gonna cut down on traffic immediately. Until it like bounces back. So the immediate like recourse is that, yeah. You have reduced visitation initially, but then given in a couple of years, then people will be like, oh, yeah, we need to like go at six o'clock.
Right. Right. I guess my, just my, and that was one example, but my general, um, point to it all is like just looking at all of the different numbers. And not getting stuck in some numbers and what that means, but can, kind of looking at our.
So one of the things, things that's interesting, um, and I can also bring this data. Um, or get this data to you pretty soon, is that the transient room tax that we're collecting right now. So if, so if we take a trend line, we've got a trend line through the growth of, of transient room tax from two thousand twelve to two thousand nineteen. So basically establish a trend pre-COVID. And then we run that trend out to this year. Uh, our TRT collections are exactly on the same trend as we were from two thousand twelve to two thousand nineteen. Like exactly the same trend. The reason it's down is, it's only down relative to twenty twenty one, the big post-COVID bomb. But if you ignore the post-COVID bomb and you just track straight across the trend from two thousand, two thousand twelve to two thousand nineteen to create that slope. When you intercept that slope of two twenty twenty three, it's exactly what we're bringing in.
So Chris, it sounds like you're happy with the, the revenue, the tax revenue we're receiving. We're right on trend. So we're good.
I didn't say anything about my opinion. What I said was that we are on trend. From two thousand twelve to two thousand nineteen. I gave no opinion on it. Please don't put words in my mouth.
We, uh, and last year, remember, we got really concerned about, you know, there was.
You know, there was the slump and we were in a commission, put more money into advertising. And then we ended up being right where we predicted, so. I guess I'm saying like it's not too too soon depending.
But yeah, I I mean, we've dramatically increased the advertising budget for this year, and so that's all uh happening.
Yeah.
But, you know, I will say, you know, you're an independent board, you can recommend whatever you want to the commission. You know, uh but the commission has the discretion to also take your advice and help.
So if we want to pick up a copy of this budget that we're looking at on these slides right now. Where would we go to pick up the packet so we can study it? I'm not seeing it in the slides.
So I can, uh if you'd like, uh I can just generate a report, you know, you, you know, I can generate it as a PDF and also as a Excel file.
That would be awesome, because I I can't, I can't read this fast, I can't.
Oh yeah. To like dive down into the detail, but at this meeting, I'm just like priming you all for.
Thank you, okay.
That's coming, and so in the next couple of months, we need to dive into the details. At this point, I'm just familiar, you know, re-familiarizing everybody with the budget. And uh the task at hand, which is to establish a advertiser's specific expenditures for all these categories of spending.
Could you send us like that, the first thing you showed us on the twenty twenty, the one we did for this year?
Yeah.
Just so we kind of remember the format that we did and.
Did that.
That's 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 in the package.
I think.
That's in the packet, we can print that one, yeah.
Can we go over the county fair? Is that going to stay separate or is it going to be a special event grant or does that, because I know that was new this year? I kind of forget what happened with that.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, it was, it was established fifty thousand dollar budget. Um so what would typically happen, you know, is that, you know, Angie would make a request for next year and um. You know, it'd be evaluated by budget advisory board, and you know, you all should, I guess, evaluate too, what what you think should be. Spent on it, it is a new thing.
Yeah.
And um because it's internal, essentially an internal event, we're kind of separated from the special events, which are. Uh money that we provide to outside organizations.
Yeah, that'd be interesting.
But.
Just to clarify, when we're looking at these slides, Chris, all of this money is. The revenue stream is TRT, is that right?
Yeah, for this one.
Okay, 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 I just want to make sure that I'm on the right page.
Yeah, so fund sixteen, which is what we're looking at right now, the mainly is TRT. But um the next one, this non TRT expense, you know, is related to. The handful of grants that we get that are not TRT, so they're in here too, they're just.
Nice.
Portion, and so we've got rural county grant, rural opportunity grant, and then the co-op marketing grant, and so these are all encapsulated also, but they're separated out. And I separated them out because it makes it easier for me to uh generate the TRT report without having that mixed in. But the rest of it. So that's fund sixteen, which is mostly um the promotional side of TRT or this establishing a provider side of TRT. Uh the next part of TRT is uh the mitigation side. And so I'll move over to there, so mitigation side, we've also got, you know, our our revenue projection. Just about five million one hundred eighty thousand for uh twenty twenty three. Um and that's pretty much the only revenue that comes in, and then the list of expenditures is pretty small. Um so we've got three hundred thousand um. Budget go to search and rescue, hundred seventeen thousand seven seventy nine to the museum. About four point three million to offset law enforcement costs, four hundred thousand uh to the solid waste special service district. And uh sixty two thousand one ninety five for emergency services at home. And that's all there is to the mitigation budget, and so most of these, like I said, you know, the three hundred thousand um. For search and rescue and uh the law enforcement contribution. These things offset general fund expensive expenses, and so they're valuable in that they reduce any future possibility or need for our property tax increase.
Were the line items that are in there, were they at one point budgeted and no longer or? Like the ones that don't have anything allocated? Like.
Oh yeah, some of these, these are, you know, this is a legacy account, so this, this particular fund's been in existence for, you know, twenty five.
Got it, okay.
So the thing about our accounting system, um and I can actually kind of hide them in here, but. The thing in our accounting system about government accounts, once you use an account, you kind of have to just uh all keep it around forever, yeah. And so I can hide the zero records and this makes it a little more uh digestible.
Like, oh my God, we're not funding the airport, what's going on?
Uh we may end up having to go back to it, I mean, in recent history, the last few years, um we've gotten a lot of federal money.
Uh huh.
Um that gets essentially um entirely funded our airport for the last couple of years, but that money is running out, and it's probably not going to be. You know, we're not going to get those grants forever, and so. Yeah, next year, you know, we're we're going to have to go back probably to using, you know, um some of these resources and more general fund resources to cover the airport.
So is there anyone that's putting a list together of. These grants are probably going to go away and we need to start thinking about it now?
Oh, I know they're going to go away, so, and I knew they were going to go away three years ago, and so we are planning.
Okay.
And so, you know, it's going to be um. Something that we have to work out, you know, uh for the twenty twenty four budget, and and mostly it's going to be a general fund issue. But, you know, it's just in terms of coming, you know, getting the, getting back to the point where the general fund is covering most of M and O out of the airport. The the big projects are are some somewhat different um in terms of how they're funded. And we do have to make match on them, each bid, we have to make about a, almost a ten percent match on most of our big NBA projects. And so we do have to come up with some uh a revenue stream to make that match. Uh and in the past, we've used TRCC for that because uh airports are allowable expenses TRCC. They are in TRT now also.
Yeah.
But they are now. And so, you know, that's pretty much it on the mitigation side, it's fairly simple, and again, you know, most of it's going to offsetting law enforcement, search and rescue. And then there's these other uh smaller contributions.
So the general fund still finds law enforcement and search and rescue, and then this is like what makes up for it?
Yeah, I mean, it 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 offsets um some of those expenditures, so law enforcement, total law enforcement budget is probably about double that. Um and uh search and rescue is probably closer like five, six hundred thousand, yeah, and so it offsets part of it. You know, and you know, if we had more TRT, we could offset more, but.
Right.
Uh so, but we do best what we can, so I, like I say. Moving this money into the general fund is advantageous, you know, there are other allowable expenses, like we'd be sending to the roads department to cover our roads needs, but. We have a sufficient budget in the roads department for one, but even if we did that again, it wouldn't be offsetting general money expense expenditures, and so. Increase potentially the likelihood that the road department tax increase, which we want to try to avoid. Any questions on the mitigation side of TRT? All right, so let's move on then to the TRCC. So we've got um essentially four taxes, um we've got the restaurant taxes, one percent tax. And then we've got a couple of different car rental taxes. Um they're both kind of complicated, the the newer one that was approved in twenty eighteen. Um it's is sort of a population based revenue sharing agreement. Uh via several different counties, so it's not just like a flat uh percentage split that we get out of that one. But essentially, you know, both of these uh are combined, you know, in my uh reports. As the car rental taxi, even though there's actually two separate ones. Um and then uh recently we've got the OHV tax, which is back to them as well. So these four taxes all combined make up, you know, what we're going to call the TRCCA taxes. Um and then we'll move on to the expenditure side of it, so um. We've got um the basic M and O for Star Hall comes out of uh the TRCCA budget. And uh then we've got contributions to other agencies. So the the debt on the Grand Center is paid out of T C T R C C A. Um and then we've got uh Grand Center operations, so this is the contribution to the general fund to offset uh some of the Grand Center's. Operation, ma- maintenance and operations, same with Osta on this uh right here. And then a little bit goes to the fireworks display, one of July fireworks.
They're rad this year.
Yeah, good.
And um the Grand Center, I'm just always very interested in the Grand Center, um it's always a debt. It's always negative, it's always in the red.
Oh yeah, it's not even close, I mean, it's a convention center, and so they do have some revenue, but you know, it's probably like. Maybe ten percent of their expenses.
I don't know.
But that's uh, that's more or less what uh what you get with uh, you know, convention facilities like that in general. If we raise the fees to cover the full cost of the of the thing, then uh hopefully we would rent. It wouldn't be used, and so.
Okay.
But yeah, you know, it's not, definitely not a moneymaker, that's for sure. But the Grand Center is also our senior center, and so, you know, there's elements um of. It's senior recreation, a lot of senior recreation and uh socialization. Uh as well as the convention element, so it's kind of a mix between like senior recreation and uh, you know, convention center.
Okay.
And so again, you know, the the expenditure side of the TRCC is pretty simple, we got basic Star Hall. I know, and then these contributions here, um which uh. Are fairly simple as well. Chris, can you give back this to the Star Hall? Yeah, I forgot, the building grounds and maintenance costs and then uh basic utilities and insurance. Yeah.
That is a very.
Yeah.
Feeling like Star Hall, yeah, paid for for a long time, been paid for for a long time.
Yeah, and so we did this big remodel, um and that was kind of expensive, but that's over.
At the Grand Center?
Uh Star Hall.
Oh, it's our all.
Star Hall had a major renovation several years ago.
Huh?
A long time ago.
I guess, Chris is like, it felt like yesterday.
I I've been here since the nineties, so everything was just like a little while ago.
Thirty years ago.
All right. So I think that that's all there is really in terms of tourism taxes, and these are the things, you know, that um. That you'll be tasked with uh prioritizing. And so I, you know, I can send these out, you know, what uh, when we look at, for instance, you know, the letter that that we sent, it's not like a detailed. Um it's not like a detailed budget where we're delving into every single account. And, you know, I think that that would just uh take forever if we were to try to like, basically, uh you know, statute doesn't request that you budget. The TRT, but rather that you produce a prioritized list of expenditure that advises like that. And so that's what I'd recommend, kind of sticking with this format where you identify for your top priorities, make sure you really line those out well. You know, in in a prioritized way, and uh and I think that that's what makes the most sense, rather than like. Trying to put a number to every single account, which would, you know, is 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 more the budget advisory board's job.
So, I mean, just that list, how many do we, how many do we all feel confident are are accomplished?
Looks pretty good.
I can make a draft of top priority list from twenty twenty four, you guys can.
Yeah.
Check that.
I think anything that was like, you know, isn't quite there yet, that needs to be added, you know?
What they did.
Yeah.
I can sit down with a chair, the chair can help me to draft them.
All right. All right. Actually, I have a question, I don't know if you can answer, but the brand planning that was on there, I'm not sure if we. Ever went anywhere with that.
No, we didn't.
Okay.
No, we have not had our, we did not ever have our meetings on branding or the rebranding or any of that, yeah, so.
Yeah, okay.
So yeah, that, you know, that may.
Or the strategic planning, we haven't done that either.
Yeah, initiated, we've we've kind of, you know, we've uh gone through the RFP, awarded the bid.
Right.
And uh initiated process, but we postponed it until we can have a director hired.
Right.
So.
So that could all be postponed until we get a, whatever happens.
So this is going to be, you know, we'll we'll have to, some of these things are commitments, you know, that we'll have to carry across uh the year, and so strategic planning, you know, is one of those. That we'll have to uh, you know, budget for because we've entered into a agreement.
But is that from out of the twenty twenty three budget for strategic planning, so we don't have to do that for twenty four?
Well, part of it has, and so the economic diversification component um has already been paid out, and that's like. Seventy five percent of the cost, I think the total on it's about a hundred fifty thousand. The diversification uh component paid for a hundred thousand, but we still have fifty thousand we need to pay. And I'll have to look at the schedule we made, you know, that fifty thousand may need to be uh rebudgeted for twenty twenty four. And that's the uh the tourism promotion component of the strategic planning. But most of it's already been paid out of the diversification. But there is still like, like I say, about fifty thousand left that needs to be paid out, but I don't think it will probably be paid out this year.
From the commitments that we've made in twenty twenty three. And the projections that we see with the money coming in, do you see a shortfall right now? Is that what you're trying to say, or are you seeing that we're on track?
There could be a shortfall, yeah, yeah, you know, and that could be addressed um a couple of different ways, you know, we could say that we're going to. Carry on with the budget that we have and just give into the fund balance more, or we can actually cut the budget. Or, you know, not necessarily cut the budget, but just decide administratively that we're not going to spend up to the maximum. You know, and that's something that I need to work with uh staff on, you know, uh at some point. In terms of trying to figure out what we're going to do if TRT continues to be uh lower than uh what's budgeted.
One more question, just to clarify, would you say we're roughly um maybe possibly twelve to fourteen? Through the end of May, correct? Is that the, our numbers are only through the end of May?
That's right, yeah, and so, so that would be, um so when we get our, when we get the money deposited. Um we roll that back two months, um because by, there's an administrative lag, you know, so. If we're trying to correlate TRT revenue with actual economic activity for a given period, we have to roll the. Or accrue the the payments back, and so we roll them back two months, and that's why we've only gotten uh to May at this point.
Makes total sense, yeah.
And so as as they can, you know, we're we're always about two months behind, and that's not really, you know. Each each allocation that we get is a big hodgepodge of a bunch of different periods, but it's predominantly going to be the two months prior. So it's not like it, it's not a perfect, you know, um. E- example of economic activity for that period, but it's, you know, closer than if we were to accrue it to any other month.
I know, very helpful, very helpful.
Um I know we're at time about, someone else have any questions? I have one quick question. Um might be more of a Robert, Melissa question, but the arch is time to entry. Have we forecasted or like planned out like we're going to keep the same budget for so many years with that or?
I think that'll determine if the park's even going to do it again, they haven't decided that yet. They're going to start having meetings, I just got a email today about, they're going to start having timed entry meetings on. Like the second Friday of the month or something, so I will, you know, they're gonna, they'll have to determine that. Probably more towards October. So.
Thanks.
Great.
All right, anyone else have any other quick questions?
No, so yeah, all the uh producer report on this. Uh, producer report on this budget, both PDF and Excel files, that matter. Then how else, you know, what other? Methods or, you know, ways of going with this would be helpful.
I just think a list of priorities would be super helpful. Perspective of like, you know, these grants are ending, right? We're we're like, big picture. As the analyst, what are you seeing that, hey, board, take a look at this, you know?
Well, I wasn't, you know, necessarily expecting to dump a bunch of TRT into the airport, um.
Would you maybe give it, send us maybe some history on what we have done TRT to the airport in the past?
Yeah, it's not much. Less than five hundred thousand total.
Yeah.
Over the years, and, you know, it hasn't, you know, we, the only time we really got dinged on. On our TRT expenditures is when we used TRT to match a grant. And then the state legislative body came and said, no, you can't do that. And then they immediately changed the law and said that you could do it. So, uh, that was the only time we really got dinged on our expenditures, but uh. It's now an allowable use for for TRT, and so I guess if we, you know. I would say that if if we can't, you know, I wouldn't necessarily do TRT to make up the M and O and the airport and less. Uh, we can't figure out how to do it just with general fund, but I'm, you know. Thinking that we'll probably be okay in terms of, you know, to get back on track, but just wanting it. Uh, with the general fund, which is what we've done for ever up until the last couple of years. And so, uh, at this point, I'm not super concerned about it. Um, I think that I'm gonna be able to get it covered without having to use the TRT for it. We might go back, though, to using TRCC, for instance, for uh the debt payments. We have three debt payments on the airport. Three loans. Uh, and so probably go back to using TRCC to uh cover that debt. That's about ninety thousand between all three of them. Per year, yeah.
Right, there's no other objections, I'd like to join this meeting? Yeah, we just have one little edit.
Chris changes his last name apparently.
In our last minutes, your your name is spelled wrong.
Thank you, everybody, that's.